You've got three minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself. Okay. And why you should be elected for the Pierce County Council District number six seat.
Great, well, thank you everyone for being here tonight and sticking around for this part of the evening. I'm running for the Pierce County Council and policy is so important in shaping the direction of a county, of a school district, of a family. And so I am passionate about serving people and good policy. So my name is LJ Rohr and I am running for the Pierce County Council in the sixth legislative district to proudly represent the communities of Lakewood, Stillicum, Dupont, Parkland, Anderson Island, JBLM. And I have lived in this community forty-four years. I am the daughter of a veteran. I am a mother of four, a proud mother, and a former foster mom. And I am very involved in serving this community. So I served today on the Stillicum Historical School Board. I am serving now in my second term. I work at this House of Representative for State Representative Michelle Callier as a senior legislative meeting. And I've also worked at the Pierce County Council for the Chair Doug Richardson for two and a half years. So I've worked in policy areas at the local level, at the state level, and at the county level. And all of those are very important pieces to understanding how to be effective and how to reach solutions and work across the aisle to get meaningful results. So I am here today like many of you because we are deeply concerned about the direction of Pierce County. Pierce County is facing significant problems. I bring a decade of policy experience, improvement leadership, and solving tough problems and bringing people together. I will be committed to people before politics. Within the past four years, our county is facing significant problems such as rising crime, increasing homelessness, a lack of affordable housing, and increased living costs. This is affecting families and businesses every day. The status quo is unacceptable and not getting better. I bring strong leadership to bring results to this community. My vision for this county and this community is a strong economy with private sector solutions, safe and sound communities, creating affordable housing, a responsible budget, and effective homelessness solutions. I look forward to talking about the issues that matter most to you.
Great, well, let's get started with question number one then. You've been elected. Congratulations. And it's your first day. So what is the first initiative or policy that you plan to pursue if you are elected?
I am confident just in my background, having the policy experience to hit the ground running. I believe one of the biggest things I hear talking to constituents, talking to businesses, that public safety is a huge issue and priority, and so is affordability. And affordability, that can be looked at in terms of like affordable housing, the cost of living. One of the, probably the first things I would want to do is work with our sheriff and our prosecutor and look at how we can create safe communities again. I'm the only candidate in this race that's endorsed by our current sheriff, but also our former sheriff and Lakewood resident Paul Pastore. I'm endorsed by the Sheriff's Guild or our union for our sheriff deputies and the Washington State Association of Police Chiefs and sheriffs. We must have safe communities in order to enjoy them. And I have been throughout our district. And there are areas that are concerning and that neighbors are concerned about their safety. The businesses are concerned about their safety. And this should be a top priority of government to be able to provide that, so.
Thank you. LJ, the county has faced criticism for not providing enough mental health services, which is often linked to homelessness and crime. What role should county government play in providing and funding these services?
We need to be partners in this community with important stakeholders, organizations, work on creating effective private-public partnerships. Mental, I think our behavioral health system has many gaps. We can look at today that we have less, than four years ago, we have less crisis stabilization beds. We need to be able to address those who are dealing with urgent crises on the street or people that need help and aren't able to get the services. So we need to be looking at how to use those funds so that they're effective, but also addressing issues of prevention. With mental health, it's incredibly critical. And we do have the resources available to start tackling those issues, as well as the drug addiction issues, especially with the rising fentanyl crisis that is in our communities today.
Pierce County has been struggling to find locations for homeless stability sites, with debates over whether funds should focus on temporary shelters or stable housing. How do you plan to address homelessness in Pierce County? And do you believe more resources should go towards temporary shelters or permanent housing solutions?
I think we have to have a multi-pronged approach that, that resources follow. I think we have to look at how we're using our revenues for short-term needs and also for those who are dealing with chronic homelessness today. I'm sorry. Would you ask the question again?
You bet. How do you plan to address homelessness in Pierce County? And do you believe more resources should go towards temporary shelters or permanent housing solutions?
I think one of the things we need to focus on is prioritizing, looking at the root causes of homelessness. And there are several from addressing the needs of, the mental health needs of people dealing with crisis, drug addiction and treatment. We also need to look at disability services. We also need to ensure that we have affordable housing and supports for people that are dealing with one-time crises, so. And also, I think, looking at how are we helping the individual get restored back to wholeness? I think we are, we have a system that is broken and that we, they might get a one-time service and that they get checked off, it gets checked off a box. We need to be developing comprehensive services that give the individual the ability to rebuild hope and skills and support to be able to become self-sufficient bit by bit.
Thank you. A metric that compares median incomes to the mortgage for a median-priced home shows Washington ranking fifth worst in the nation in housing affordability. Projects like Aviva Crossing aim to address affordable housing, but rising costs continue to be a challenge. How would you work with developers, local governments, and nonprofits to ensure a mix of affordable and market-rate housing is available?
So we have a housing crisis in our community. We have 110,000 homes that are needed to be put online by 2044. In order to do that, we have to have several solutions. But we must understand that government doesn't provide housing. We need to work with our industry leaders, our developers, our builders, and ensure that we are incentivizing and creating a market where they can build homes of all types where we have buildable lands. I increasingly hear from this community that we have to work on our regulatory overlays, our time, our permitting process timelines. And those are incredibly constraining on that being able to build. Just to build a home is, you know, at least 25,000 before they ever start work through permitting processes. We need to look at ways to reduce the cost because all those costs get passed along. And in order for us to provide affordable housing, we have to look at how we can help industry leaders to be able to create the supply that is needed.
Thank you. LJ, businesses have faced a difficult last four years with the pandemic. High inflation and challenges in finding and developing a workforce is at the top of the list. Federal dollars like the American Rescue Plan allocations, the RBA funds are going away. How will you work with businesses to make sure they not only survive in Pierce County, but thrive?
I believe we have to create the conditions for economic growth in this county and for businesses to be able to thrive and to come here to be successful. You know, I'm hearing from many people in business how difficult it is. Some of the big issues are just crime. They, we need to be enforcing our laws. We also need to look at, which includes staff, employees, to be another example. So we need to create the conditions for them to be able to succeed. So crime is a factor, graffiti is a factor, being able to have the workforce they need. So we need to look at leveraging partnerships at the state level and also advocating for funds that fund programs and initiatives for CTE and workforce training for, you know, manufacturing, healthcare. So that we have the workforce available. And we also need to have affordable housing so that people can have, live, work, and play in Pierce County, not go to King County to have a job. So other things we could do too is, well, yeah. Thank you.
I too, thank you. Crime rates in parts of Pierce County have been a major concern, and residents are looking for solutions to improve safety. What specific initiatives do you propose to reduce crime and enhance public safety, especially in the high-crime areas of Pierce County?
One of the statistics that was brought up with the executive candidates is that Washington is, we're one of the worst in the country, I believe our fifty-first per police per capita. And my understanding, from talking to the current sheriff, is Pierce County is the worst per capita for counties in Washington State. You know, I went on a ride-along and talked with the deputy and talked with deputies in kind of their central meeting. And I am hearing increasingly just how difficult and spread is thin they are in responding to crises or to phone calls, priority issues. So I think we need to look at definitely making sure we're fully staffed, that they have the tools that they need to address crime, that they, that they also have the training. One of the things my, the incumbent has voted for is to make the sheriffs an appointed position. And when you do something like that, your sheriff is no longer accountable to you or the public for public safety. They are accountable to a partisan employer. And that does not make your communities more safe. That is what we see in King County. And that's not what we're aiming to be. Like, we can be a safe community in Pierce County. So I definitely would be working with key leaders to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. Pierce County has to balance funding essential services with managing its budget responsibility. How would you prioritize spending in the county's budget? And what would you do to ensure fiscal responsibility while still funding critical services?
The county has a $3 billion budget. We also know that about 70% to 75% goes to our criminal justice system. So it would be absolutely essential that we have a, I believe, a higher functioning criminal justice system in Pierce County. And that will take catalog collaboration, it will take work, it will, we will have, you know, that requires setting, I believe, also like a new culture to create new norms in our, in our community. Other primary services range from all the departments. We have employees of up to 3,000. And we need to make sure that they have stable jobs, that they are able to have great wages. And some of the concerns is that we have been, our, I believe, our general fund balance should be at 15%, and we've seen that go down in the past several years. Just in 2023, I believe the incumbent sent a message or a message, a letter to the legislature asking for them to support Senate Bill 5770, which increases the property tax cap from one to three percent. And that was just based on the fact that in three years, that the county was facing a budget deficit of $43 million. And what the reality is as well is the Washington Association of Counties also has shared that the statistic for counties' revenues has actually doubled this past decade. So I think we have to learn to be fiscally responsible. We have revenue coming in, we are overspending in the county.
Thank you. As Pierce County continues to grow, traffic congestion and aging infrastructure remain significant challenges. What infrastructure projects or transportation improvements would you prioritize to reduce traffic congestion and support growth in Pierce County?
Some key projects that I would support fully is the Gateway Project, which, that connects 167 to I-5. I believe that's a project that has state funding up to, and should be a job that we should be able to complete by 2029. So that would be a key priority of mine is to make sure that we remain on that timeline, that our state continues to keep that amount in the budget so that we can bring 80,000 jobs to Pierce County, because that's what that project alone would do. The Fredrickson Freight Corridor down to the port is an essential project. I know the Port of Tacoma is advocating for that. I believe other key stakeholders are JBLM and also just the industrial area that we need to be creating a more robust road system. And by doing so, we will take congestion off of the other roads, but it will also work to increase the quality of life people are experiencing. Another key project is connecting Washington, that's by JBLM. We need to support our, JBLM, who is our second-largest employer in Pierce County. But they have key projects from the Nisswale Bridge getting widened, so we need to protect that funding. That's essential to our national safety, but is also really important to all the soldiers that come and live in our community. They must be, they can't afford to live in Pierce County. A majority of our service people drive to Lacey. And so that's another key project. Another key project, because we live in the sixth district, is our fairies, Mr.
Yes, our fairies. Washington State residents gathered in our signatures to present seven initiatives to the voters of Washington State. Although the legislature on Route Three, there are four that will be going to the vote of the people in November. I think you're familiar with all four of the initiatives, so I won't bore you with reading them. Do you support or oppose the initiatives on the ballot this November? And how do you think they affect the business community?
I do support those initiatives. I work at the legislature, so I receive many emails, phone calls of constituents across, I work for Pierce County Legislature, so I hear from Pierce County residents, you know, how important it is that these initiatives are brought forward. So during the legislative session, three of them were brought forward and passed successfully, which were really critical citizen initiatives, such as police pursuits. But that's what happens when your elected leaders aren't carrying you. The initiative process was an incredible process where the people have the power, because we are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And so with, you know, with resounding results, Washingtonians came with six initiatives and now seven. And that's, that's never been done in history. So I think what's made to citizens, citizens' voice, is what we're here for to, we are a representative government, and I absolutely support that. The impact it would have on businesses, natural gas, banning that makes the cost of living, the cost of running your business more expensive, especially if you have to convert to electricity. There's a tremendous cost per household of 40,000. I think you look at the long-term care tax, that has a tremendous burden on employers as well. I'm thinking of some of the other ones. There's the climate commitment act. And that, you know, there are businesses like trucking industry where the gas tax, that gas tax is down, increasing costs. And those costs increase the cost of your debts, increase the cost of paying for employees. And so I fully support the initiatives.
Thank you. Last question. Currently, governments can collect 1% more annually in property tax, plus any revenues attributable to the value of new construction without voter approval. Last session, Senate Bill 5770 proposed to raise the cap from 1% to 3%. Do you support raising the cap? And why or why not?
I do not support raising the cap. I also under, I can understand why a policy like that could be brought forward for the county. Like I shared, our revenues have nearly doubled this past decade. I believe it sets us on a dangerous precedent. We should be making housing more affordable, not more expensive. That is something that I hear from constituents constantly, from people that are renting to people that are homeowners. We need to ensure that our veterans, that our seniors on fixed incomes have homes. And I hear more and more that this would force people out of their homes. It would potentially increase our homelessness issue because we do not have affordable housing stock. We need to do something about that in our county. And it would make it increasingly difficult to own a home in Pierce County in the future, like Seattle. I have four kids, I know how hard it is for them to look at trying to buy a home today, and it's very difficult. So to have a policy that creates unpredictability year by year from a 1% to 3% tax on your property taxes, I would not support that, so.
Thank you. So LJ, would you like to wrap up with our one-on-one with any final words to our friends here in the audience?
Sure. Well, thank you everyone for being here. I'd be, I'm so grateful for the business community. What you do is so important. You create jobs, you are tokens in our community, pillars that create jobs, you create investment back into our schools, into families, and I am deeply honored to be here tonight. So Pierce County is facing significant challenges. We've seen rising crime, homelessness, affordable housing, lack of infrastructure being built, increasing regulation and cost, and families and businesses need leaders who will fight for them. So on day one, I will be, I will work with you and local leaders to create a thriving business climate for communities. My vision for Pierce County My vision for Pierce County is one that empowers individuals, the private sector solutions, partnerships. And it's time we create safe and sound communities, affordable housing, and effective solutions to homelessness. With a clear vision for that, proven leadership, and a decade of experience solving tough problems, I humbly ask for your vote.
LJ, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thanks.
It was great chatting. Once again, let's give it up for LJ. I also want to thank Kelly Chambers and Ryan Mello, who are asking for your vote to lead as Pierce County Executive. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. And finally, to everyone in our audience, I want to thank you for joining us tonight. I hope that you got perspective and information that you were looking for. If not, I think that several of our candidates are still here, so you can quicken at them and offer them a free cup of coffee and find out what their point of view is. But I, but I hope that we had some well-rounded questions that will, will help you determine who you would like to support this, this November. So please feel free to stick around and chat with our candidates, chat with each other as we wrap up this evening, but don't think we're chasing you out if you see us picking things up, okay? Thanks again for joining us.